Okay, at seven o'clock, I'll call us to order. This is a meeting of the No Ink Zoning Commission. I'm gonna call the roll so you know who the five voting members are. My name's Rick Smith, I'm the chairman. Dana Oviette waved, so, well, people see your name, they know. So Dana's on Blake Powell, Nip Tanner. I do not see, there's Beth, our fifth member Beth Steele. Those are the five voting members. We have two, one at the moment. Alternate, who is Larry Dunn, who's also serving and has for a year as the host of the Zoom meetings, and with any luck, this will be the last time we do Zoom meetings, so we'll see. Lynn Marshall is the all, the other active alternate that we've had, and we also have two new, I'm sorry, three new alternates that were elected. Their terms of office start on July 1st. I saw one a moment ago, hadn't seen her right, but now she's off. And Mary Ellen Furlong, and Tom Leary, but I don't see him on, okay. They're all spectators, observers, as, as our other members of the public. Okay, so that's a roll call, I have to read this statement for beginning a Zoom meeting. This meeting of the No Ink Zoning Commission will take place through Zoom remote meeting technology. My name is Rick Smith, I'm chairman of the commission, the host of the meeting is Larry Dunn, alternate zoning commission member. Anyone speaking should state their names prior to speaking each time. The participants in this meeting will be the commission members and staff, persons with applications for architectural design review that have been previously submitted for consideration, and the commission's counsel, if he joins us, I don't expect him to. At the discretion of the chairman, or the concurrence of the commission, elected alternate members of the commission may participate during old business, during discussion of the short-term rental issue. Again, for new alternates, that starts July 1st. Participants who would like to comment on an item or share a screen item should indicate by such by using the raise hand icon, which we never do, or by raising your hand visually in front of the screen, which we always do. Participant will have the opportunity to speak after being called upon by the chairman. If we get a lot of noise in the background, one, which sometimes happens when there are a lot of people on the call, we'll mute everyone except commissioners, but normally we don't need to until such times it gets noisy. To offer a motion or a second commissioner should physically raise their hand and be acknowledged by the chairman. To vote commissioners will be called upon individually by the chair, so we have an audio record as well as visual. Public can participate in the meeting as observers, and at the start of the meeting during the general comments section of the agenda, which issues which are not on the agenda can be raised for future commit, commission consideration. All participants, including commissioners and staff, must identify themselves before speaking each time they speak. Members of the public can also submit comments by writing to the commission after the meeting for consideration on any item discussed tonight. Finally, a recording of tonight's meeting will be posted on the town of Groton's website within seven days of the meeting, and you can find that link on the agenda that was sent out for this meeting. Okay. And Lynn Marshall has joined us, Lynn is the other active alternate we have had involved in discussions for the last two years. Okay, so that's the statement. This is now the general comments session, section of the agenda, and I've asked Larry to see if he can unmute everyone for the moment. This is for members of the public to comment on items which are not otherwise on the agenda. It's brief, just intended to alert us to emerging issues as opposed to, you know, a lengthy statement about the issue. It would be for agenda setting. So is anyone on the screen interested in offering a comment in this general comments section?
You just have to unmute yourself, remove that lock.
I see, okay. I don't see any hands waving, so I'm going to say nobody has anything for that agenda item, so we'll move on. Next item is the applications section. That is, the first one is the application for a certificate of design appropriateness of T House Limited LLC, Ronald and Rebecca Bizik to construct a five-foot-by-12-foot dormer on the second floor of the home at 25 Palmer Court. Could we have that document up now, Larry? Bill has authorized this to come before the commission, it's for a design review. And just before we get going on that, I'll remind everyone that last time I had some significant technical difficulties and had to go out and log back on through my phone, so Beth, be prepared, you may have to take over. Okay, so is Mr. Bizik going to give the presentation, or is there a representative or an architect, Mr. Bizik?
It'll be me.
Okay, good, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, walk us through what you're proposing, and you'll see, everything you submitted, we digitized and have it sequentially. So we have your plans. We have, yeah, scroll through Larry, and we'll just get a flavor for it, and then we'll go back and Mr. Bizik can comment however he wants, so just keep going through slowly, so we see everything that's there. Okay, there's the, the house itself. Keep going. Okay, we have a variety of plans like this. Commissioners have seen these already, so this is for the public if they're interested. Mr. Bizik to know how we arrayed these for him. Okay, just go more quickly, Larry, you know, we'll just get a flavor, and then we'll go back and talk about them. Okay, this is the large plan, which I couldn't get onto one screen and be legible, so I just took it in pieces of the site. Couple of views of the house. And the rest are the comparable properties. Oh, I'm sorry, the 200-foot map. Then we have the comps.
Pictures.
Larry, we can go back to the front now, because we'll get to these as we go through the presentation. Just zip back up to the top. Great, thank you. Okay, so this is a five-foot-by-12-foot dormer on the second floor, so Mr. Bizik, you have the floor.
Thank you, I endeavor to try to be as complete as possible, I watched a few of your Zoom meetings and heard the comments about not having a complete application, so I did the best I could here for you. So what you see, what you see here is the existing survey of the property. I've got the main building at the bottom, there is an outbuilding garage in the back left and a small shed, and then the, an existing guest house that was on the property, I bought it back in 2015, or sorry, 2005, house, the house and the property in general has gone, undergone significant changes over the years, I don't know, many of you probably remember this house as for many years, this property for many years really not being well-kept, my wife and I bought it, and, you know, we love it, so we want to add a small dormer to the second floor of the property, of the, of the home, which would match the dormer that's already up there, just extending it out to the existing roofline of, of the house itself, which I'll show you in the pictures. It's five by 12, the plan for that is to add a bathroom and a closet for one of our children, the other child already has a bath and a closet, which is in the, the existing dormers, I'll show you. I don't think it's really, actually, this is a good picture, so if you look in, on the second floor, you'll see the dormer coming out. That's part of a bedroom that's upstairs, there's two bedrooms. I'm proposing to bring that forward all the way to the eve of the roofline facing the water, or, or towards us in the picture. And again, it's five by 12. My belief, from my opinion, for what it's worth, is that if anything, it'll finish the look of the house more so than having that sort of choppy, that choppy aspect of the roofline. It's not going to affect anybody's view, I would say that it will be visually pleasing, no, no less so than it is currently. And that's the nature of the project. I've put together various drawings here, let's, let's scroll down if we could. There you go, so I've given you the various views that, that you all had asked for. What you see on this page is the current view of the property from the south elevation and the east elevation. So that's the existing dormer on the second floor without adding on to that dormer and extending it out. Continue please. So this, this view here would be with the extension of the dormer out to, towards the water, or towards the south. And then the east view, of course, showing the same. These are just a different, rather than having a schematic, this is more of a pictorial view of, of the same things we've just talked about. Continue. Again, not that we're all up in a drone, but it's from up top. And then that's from Palmer Court, that's from the street. So folks that are walking up the hill, this is what they would see, and we all know many people walk up the hill. I think we can page through this, I just submitted it, that was an updated survey, I had MCU for us before we submitted. Continue please. I think we've already, we've already reviewed this, that's the existing footprint of the house, I'm not expanding the footprint of the house in any way. So this, this, this is probably a picture telling a thousand, says a thousand words, you can see on the, on the, where the arrow is pointing, that's where the dormer would go. And to the left of the arrow is the dormer that currently has a bathroom and closet in it. And this is from Palmer, this is taken from the Palmer Court view looking north. This would be from the bottom of Snake Hill, as we affectionately call it, and this would be, I guess, the eastern, or sort of northeastern view. That's where the, the new dormer would go, that's, again, simply a picture of what exists today. Continue please. I got your 200-foot radius. I heard the comments in one of the meetings. You'll find later a picture of all, each and every one of these properties that's within 200 feet of the boundary of our property at 25 Palmer Court. So I've just pictorially representing what pictures I took, and they're all, they're all coded within the number of the lot. To make it a little simpler, I simply drew an aerial, I took an aerial view and then gave you a polygon so that you can see exactly which homes fell within that 200-foot radius. And then we would just continue to page through, and you can't, I don't know if you've looked at them already, but these are all the various homes around me, within 200 feet. Some of which I didn't even know existed, by the way. Buried very well in some of these streets. So you can see in, in keeping with the, this architecture and the design of the community, there are a number of homes with dormers. Seems, you know, that it's an effective and, and attractive way, if you will, to accomplish getting a little bit more space in a house without expanding the footprint, and while keeping with the aesthetics of No Ink and the community at large. Lots of them. You feel like you're getting a tour through No Ink?
Pretty much.
Yeah, it's a lot of homes.
That part of the village is so congested with big homes on small lots that, you know, I didn't count how many there were, but there were a lot.
Yeah, we have .9 acres, which made it challenging to get the, you know, you had to take a lot of pictures of a lot of properties.
Now, is that the end of it?
I believe so, you know.
Okay. Do you have anything else to offer before I go to commissioners for questions of you?
I don't, and I'm happy, but I'm happy to answer questions if they have any.
Okay, good enough, commissioners, comments on, or questions on the application? I do not see any, and I think I'm scrolling through and getting everyone. Dana, Blake, Nip, question? You got on, unmute, please? There you go.
Not a question, but a comment, I'd like to I'd like, I'd like to congratulate the applicant on a very thorough and complete application. Nice job, thank you.
Thank you, Nip, I, I listened to you very well.
Fair enough, anybody else? Looking for, there's Beth, questions, Beth? No, okay. Then if there are no questions by commissioners, is there a motion? Beth Steele.
That's still, I move to determine based on the potential impact on neighborhood architectural harmony and character, property values, historical integrity, and/or public health and safety, the level of review deemed appropriate for this application is a site plan review under section 2.26.6.5, and to both weight all specific submitted requirements that are not included in this application, because they would not aid the commission in its determination of the application's compliance with section 2.26. You accept the application is complete and to approve the application of T House LLC for certificate of design appropriateness. To construct a five-foot-wide-by-12-foot-long dormer on the second floor attached to existing dormer for use as a bathroom and closet at property located at 25 Palmer Court, knowing Connecticut, because it meets the criteria set forth in section 2.26 of the zoning ordinances for the knowing fire district.
Second.
Second by Nip Tanner. Comments or questions on the motion commissioners? I see none. Call a roll, wave your hand when I call your name, Dana Oviette. So yes. Blake Powell. Yes. Nip Tanner.
Yes.
That's a yes. Beth Steele.
Yes.
That's a yes, and I'm a yes, so motion carries five, nothing. So Mr. Bizik, you can approach Bill Mulholland. You could probably get there, but he might be going at 7:30, so probably next Tuesday to get your, get your permit from him. And I agree with Nip, that was a nice application, good job, thank you. Next application is John Lockwood for Jessica Lyon. This is 93 Pearl Street. There is going to be several recusals, so we'll take those, and then I will make appointments of an alternate recusals. Okay, Blake Powell, Beth Steele, and are recusing because of their proximity of their property to the subject property. That leaves us two down, we still have a quorum, but I will speak Larry Dunn. Just to give us a little more discussion points. I would seat Lynn Marshall, but she also has a proximity problem, she's within the close zone to that property. So the four voting members on this will be myself, Nip Tanner, Blake Powell, I'm sorry, Dana Oviette, and Larry Dunn. So make sure I get that, okay. Yeah. Like, recuse. Okay. Very seated for Larry is seated for Beth Steele, I have to say that for the record. So four voters, okay, here's the application, it's to renovate the existing structure at 93 Pearl Street and add a second floor to the main body of the house. There's also a pinned in picture of what looks like either an expanded or replacement deck on the east side of the property. And John Lockwood is the applicant, so we want to make sure we get him unmuted. There he is, he's unmuted, is Mrs. Lyon coming also, or is it just you, John?
I believe it's just me.
Okay, all right, the same thing, Larry, let's just scroll through and see. These, the five and six, by the way, they're, they, this is an old checkoff sheet, but Bill did approve all of this, so so there's the site plan. Okay, we can do the comparable views as John is going through the presentation. So let's, yeah, get back up to the beginning. Okay. Okay, John, you are on.
Well, good evening, and I appreciate your time to listen to me go on with this one. I was brought on by Jessica Lyon to not only oversee the renovation of the home, but also to come up with this design that I think we're, we found we're pretty happy. Our intent was to take the, as you see in those views, really pieces of, of all of a, the adjoining as well as surrounding No Ink Village, and incorporate them into what we kind of felt was a real village feel for this home. The current home, being 1,360 square feet, it is a, a non-conforming in the zoning regulations home. It, as you mentioned already, that the very small lots, this is a very small lot in existing. We are not planning on exceeding the, the footprint of the home, actually, we're only doing an addition over a portion of the home, not the whole home. But we, what our intent was, was to really not walk away from the existing appearance of the home, but to really accentuate it and bring it into, you know, more of a village feel than, than, you know, what's there to, to try to make it to, you know, a very appealing little home. The only thing from the, the site criteria that is where it has an existing deck that we're removing and then just replacing. Other than that, there really is no changes to site features whatsoever. So if we want to move on, we can roll into the next one. This is what would intended to be the, the current front elevation. Some of the things that we were doing to try, and with the, the height limitation on the house, I didn't want it to feel like a very flat roofed house. We wanted to make it feel like, you know, even as you just mentioned with this theme of dormers, that it almost felt like it's a single-floor home where we put dormers on the, the home to, to provide the space of the second floor. I didn't want it to, to feel like it didn't belong, thus using the, the, the steeper roof angles on the elevations to try to make the image a little more appropriate. Also utilizing like in the porch there for the railings, using an enclosed shingled railing rather than something that more modern, we're trying to actually, the theme of the home was to really maintain more of an old feel, not a modern feel, we're using old four-panel doors inside, we're using, you know, that, that more of the old look rather than a new look. The, the exterior of the home will be a, a natural cedar, natural finished cedar shingle with a white paint trim on it. So that, you know, that, again, is really in-keeping and blending in with the homes in the area. You can roll on to the next one. This, this is the side of elevation where the existing garage rolls in, so you can just see there's the second floor sitting up on top of the, the main body of the house. And then the wing off to the right isn't changed from its existing style. We can move on. Also, one of the things you'll see in these, the, the current home, the, the double-hung windows are, are very small. And, and in the bedrooms, we're putting in the, the larger double hungs, so that you do have that, that Egress standard, that requirement is fulfilled. And, and also to, to make the house a little more bright and cheery. We can move on. This being the last elevation on the, if this actually, just finishing out that whole theme. And, and this is the side of the house that has the, the least change, because that's the existing wing coming out of it. But again, in that elevation to break it up, I was using the steeper roof pitches to try to not make the house look like just a shallow pitched box, so to speak. Move on. Now, under the, the current first floor, so what we're doing is, as I said, it's a 1,360-square-foot four-bedroom, two-bath, with the painted shake cedar shingles on the siding and a tongue-and-grooved pine gable ends, changing it to the natural cedar shingles. The ultimate will be the, on the second floor, they're adding 772 square feet, thus making it a 2,088-square-foot home. And ultimately, it's, it would be a five-bedroom, three-bath. So the first floor, as you can see, really, we're going to be, the intention is almost to turn the house upside down, because all of what was existing, the bedrooms and the living room, they want to just open it up with an open concept to try to make the very small rooms into one large room. So that the kitchen, dining, living room is one large space, eliminating that bathroom. And then keeping the, the, the bathroom in the back and the two rear bedrooms. We can move on to the next one. So there's the, the, the new look for the, the first floor, trying to, to open it up. And then we can go on and see that, you know, it's just really kind of making the, the smaller rooms that that house was kind of felt like it was, it was a part of it, was to, to really turn it into more of a, a contemporary feel, because it's all open, but yet still, we're going to maintain a, a very old look within it. Move on to the, to the second floor, that's what we're adding. Upstairs, two, two small bedrooms and a master bath, master suite with the master bath. And then the, the final would be the, the next one is just the, the overall roof lines of the, the space, trying to And then the uh, the final would be the, the next one is just the the overall roof lines of the the space, trying to uh uh, like I said, trying to kind of keep it in in with what it was already, so that it, you're not try to make it feel like it was uh walking away from what it was. Um, the sections where we, this is where uh Bill came into it, we were with that uh height limitation. We are maintaining the height limitation requirement. Um, and uh I I ran the sections just to show that we were going to be able to uh get the second floor in as well as as meet the twenty-five foot height requirement uh uh within the village. We can just, we can move on to the next. Both of those are all the sections. This was within the 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 two hundred foot. Um, and actually, there'll be a lot of examples within that two hundred foot area that we took that that you can see, we'll tie right into exactly what, you know, we are doing and where we were taking our our uh our theme from. Um, to try to uh really sort of fit in with the the surroundings. This is what the house, of course, looks like now. And uh, as I said, it's it's the uh the painted, the large faced cedar shaped shingle. And we'll go with more of that New England style, the uh unfinished um cedar shingle uh rather than the shake style. Um, the tongue and grooved pine gable ends will go away. It'll be all shingled with uh um, all the painted trim. Move on. And then uh, of course, in the, in the back, yeah, the uh, the space is pretty tight in order to get a direct shot at the elevations, but um, they, it does, it does go all the way around. You move on. Yeah, finally, and then, as I said, there, nothing with like, you know, we got existing trees. We had known there was the, you know, that the trees out front. We were, we were keeping and all, um, everything else should uh remain the same. And then it, and then it rolls through uh into some of these adjacent homes where you'll start to see, you know, some of the concepts of that we were trying to uh utilize uh within the uh the style of the home. Actually, there's a a pretty good example with the the dormering and the 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 trim style and and everything that was going on that we're uh utilizing right there. And again, there's the 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 cedar shingles and the trim.
That's the end.
And then with that, I will gladly answer any questions I'm sure you have.
Okay, commissioners, uh questions for Mr. Lockwood. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking for Beth and Lynn and Blake and they're recused, so. Okay, makes it easy. So I'm looking for Nip and Dana and Larry and myself. Dana, questions? You got unmute? There you go.
Okay, there we go. Um, so this question is fellow commissioners, because um I'm a little bit ignorant on this particular point. There's a twenty, approximately twenty foot, twenty foot setback on the Pearl Street side. So if uh the house is elevated, does that need a variance?
Uh, it's not being elevated, so I'm.
All right.
I'm, uh, the house's first floor is going to sit on the same foundation. Is that right, Mr. Lockwood?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. They're only increasing the roof line, but Bill says it's within the uh, the height limit.
Okay. The um, the the material of the chimney, uh what material are you suggesting for that?
The uh, the existing chimney is brick, and at this point, that they want, they wanted to uh have that go up through as brick. Um, if it cannot be brick, then it was going to be uh shingled and trimmed to match the house.
Okay.
The uh, if the current chimney, I will see, because I've been up on that roof, has a a stainless steel, what I I have to presume is an insert going down to the furnace. Um, because it is only for the furnace. And until I take it apart, I can't uh ascertain the condition of the chimney. Uh, and I didn't want to take it apart, um, you know, at this point, because then that would uh, you know, leave them with problems, because it is a cemented uh stainless steel top on top of that chimney.
Okay. Um, the the windows that are shown on the house are not divided lights. Is is that what's intended, or are they?
Oh, there, there wasn't going to be any grills in them. The current house doesn't have them either.
The current house doesn't have them?
I don't believe so. No, yeah, it does.
Because most of the houses around within that two hundred square, two hundred feet have divided lights.
Okay.
More Dana?
The uh the railing that's shown in the drawing, I don't think comes out very well. And I'm having.
Are we on the deck?
Yeah, um, well, pretty much all the way around that, in the front of the house. I see a railing there.
The front of the house, they wanted to do uh a solid, there's a couple of them in the area there that were like that, that they wanted to do a solid wall with the shingle eh in a, in a, in a cap, um, rather than a regular railing. And just to, you know, kind of fit in a little bit better, the railings on the the deck in the rear would be a white aluminum railing. Uh, a solid uh extruded aluminum railing.
On the rear, what about the front?
No, the front was going to be a solid uh shingled, uh natural cedar shingle on a solid wall to the thirty-six inch.
Okay. And just for my information, the the shed on the north side, they had, that's uh of the house, that's not being removed, correct?
It's, it's not being torn down. They were making attempts to to see if, you know, someone what is going to want it or something, so that they've kind of tabled it for right now. They weren't just going to tear it down, no.
I think that's it for me for now.
Okay. Uh, Larry or Nip. Uh, let me see, Nip?
Larry, head his hand up first.
Larry first, okay. I can't see all of you, unfortunately. Okay, Larry, go ahead.
I just, just to reconfirm, there's a, your drawing shows a a twelve by twenty deck for the back, and is that the same size? This doesn't, this looks like in a regular sized deck.
That the existing deck is actually kind of irregular, and it's it's smaller than that. That deck goes all the way out to the end of the wing. Um, and is quite large. Uh, we were just reducing the size of it to to uh, you know, just a a normal deck. Um, the deck obviously needs to be replaced. Uh, it's in poor condition. So it's, it's all the structure, everything's getting redone.
Okay, so it's in effect a smaller deck than what is existing.
Yes, okay, yeah.
Um, and again, to confirms that you're taking off all the siding and uh, what's that, and everything's going to be replaced with the natural cedar shake? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, and all right, and I, I think uh Dana kind of hit anything else I was thinking of, so over to you, Art.
Okay, Nip.
Uh, Nip Tanner, uh, Mr. Lockwood, I'd like to again, thank you for a very thorough presentation. Wish all of the ones that we got were as, this was this one uh in, in. On the grill work in the windows is uh, you know, this, this isn't an eighteen fifty house. And you're, you know, you're doing a reasonable job to make it look as appropriate as possible. And I would not advocate that you um add grill work if the owners prefer not. Uh, I put an addition on my house uh a few years ago and decided to take advantage, my original house is an eighteen fifty-six house and uh all of the oh, and windows have dividers in them, but I decided to take advantage of the mounting technology where we can make bigger sheets of glass, and you can have nice big windows with unobstructed, unobstructed views. So personally, I have no problem with you going down that path, if that's what the uh the owners prefer.
I appreciate that. That is exactly what she wanted. She, she was really hoping to not have the grills.
Understood. Thank you.
Anything else, Nip?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, I just, uh, I want to hear the answer again on the the, the deck on the east side, the railing. Not that photo there, yeah. Uh, is it going to be that kind of railing, or is it going to be aluminum, but with, you know, code compliant?
Exactly. No, it's a, it's a brand new, yeah, so these are, these are extruded aluminum powder coated, white finished um, uh railings that, you know, are stronger than any composite railing or any PVC or any of that kind of stuff that you're going to put there, and they are, of course, a code compliant. They have the spindles, they have everything um, that's supposed to have, that that, that one clearly does not have.
Not actually our business, other than for the design and the visual appearance, but I wanted to make sure that we weren't missing something big there. Good. Uh, that was it from me. So let's see, that was Larry, Nip, Dana, myself. So that's the four voters. Okay, is there a motion on this application?
Uh, I move to determine that based on the potential impact on neighborhood architectural harmony and character property values, historical integrity, and our public health and safety. The level of review deemed appropriate for this application is a site plan review under section point two six, six point five. Both way, all specifics and middle requirements are not included in this application because they would not aid the commission in this determination of the application's compliance with section two point two six. And to accept the application as complete and to approve the application of John Lockwood on behalf of Jessica Lyon for a certificate of design appropriateness to remodel the exterior of a home at a second story and deck at ninety-three Pearl Street in Noang. Because it meets the criteria set forth in section two point two six of the zoning ordinances for the Noang Fire District.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Larry Dunn seconded, okay. Uh, discussion on the motion. Is there any Larry, Nip, or Dana? Dana, discussion on the motion?
So what, what are we deciding about divided lights and the windows? Was that Nip's uh comment, or that had nothing to do with my comment?
Um, you both had a comment. Yours was leaving an open question. His was stating a a preference. Uh, it's ripe for debate if you would like to talk about it. Um, and then, you know, your options are one of you persuade the other if you have a difference of opinion, or you can add a condition to the permit, which the motion the the motion that Nip read from has a space to add conditions, which would be things that we recommend doing.
Okay, um, I guess um, this, and this question is addressed to Nip. Um, we, we get pictures of houses, and we examine the houses within two hundred feet of a particular property to make sure that there's some conformity going on. And um, I've argued that uh the house should have divided lights. Um, because we've looked at all these other houses, and in fact, most of them do have divided lights, and yet Nip is making an exception to that, and he's always been a stickler on making sure that we get the two hundred feet radius correctly. And we're looking at the appropriate houses, and yet he's making um an exception. So I'm just wondering you know, I'm open, I'm open to anything, but I'm just wondering how he justifies that simply, unless it's simply on the basis of what he did to his house.
Uh, may I speak a moment just before we go to Nip for a response?
Yeah.
Uh, I would hope, urge that we, we frame our comments as on the application and not what some other commissioner said. Because I don't want to have to through Zoom clean up blood on the floor. Thank you.
I didn't mean, I, I didn't mean to take it to mean it personally at all.
Okay.
Sounded it. If I sounded that way, I apologize.
No problem. Uh, Nip, uh, comment on the substance of the co- of uh Dana's comment?
Uh, Nip Tanner. The, the original house is um far from a typical uh vintage Noang house. It's um, looks like it may have started life as a ranch and gotten a couple of additions. The uh, the windows are fine for it. But the architectural changes that are being proposed will make the house fit into Noang better than it does in its current configuration. And I think it would be inappropriate to require that all of the windows have grills in them. It's, it, as I said, the reason that the older houses have that is because the glassmaking technology from a hundred and seventy years ago did not permit them to make the larger panes of glass that we can now get. And it, it seems to me, you know, we have not, we, we look at neighboring houses, and we look at them primarily to see the style of the house. I hope we're not headed in the direction of requiring that all doorways and windows and other architectural accessory items be held to strict conformance to what the neighbors have. Because in general, the neighbors, you know, in particular, I think this neighborhood was typical of Noang. In general, if you get into two hundred foot radius of almost confined wide variety of architectural styles. And uh, you know, I, I congratulate Mr. Lockwood and Ms. Lyon in taking this house, which is pretty insignificant at the moment, and making it better.
Hey, um, that was Larry and Dana and uh Mr. Lockwood. Actually, I want to make sure commissioners all have a chance to comment first, and I don't see Larry or Dana saying more. So uh, Mr. Lockwood want to comment on that?
I, i- if it helps, uh, I I just was scrolling through it and and um, of course, one of the ones that we kind of closely associate ourselves to eighty-eight Pearl uh with the natural cedar shingle.
We have that picture in here that Larry.
In there.
Okay.
Right there. That, that's, you know, a- almost directly across the street.
Yeah.
That has no window grills um as as one unit uh for comparison. Um, yeah, uh, there are windows, where did it go? Um, at Eight Palmer that don't have grills in them. At Eight Palmer that don't have grills in them. So, I mean, it's not every single home around it has grills. I mean, there are some that don't. Eight, Eight Palmer has actually got a mix with grills and without grills. I mean, and, and then there's a few other examples of that that are, that are dissimilar. But it was really that, that eighty eight pearl was, was the genesis of where they were kind of hoping for the similarity to that, that, you know, they'd have the openness of the windows without the grills in them in the natural cedar shingle finish.
Okay. Okay, motions made and seconded. Unless there is a motion to amend and add a permit condition, the main motion would stand and I would point out that Nip's having a little bit of a technical difficulty with his computer, not with him. And the motion was a little bit garbled, but that will be written in the record of the minutes. So there should be no confusion. It's our standard motion. For anyone watching that would be concerned about the absence of a record, we will have that literally in the minutes because it's standard language. So it, is there a motion to amend to add a permit condition? I do not see one. All right, then let's call the question. All those in favor, Nip Tanner?
Hi.
Dana Oviet?
Hi.
Okay, Larry Dunn?
Hi.
Okay, and I'm an I, so four to nothing, the motion passes. So Mr. Lockwood, you can next Tuesday, go see Bill Mulholland to get your zoning permit, which then gets you to the town. You know the route, then you go for your building permit.
I appreciate one's input and time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that takes care of the two applications for tonight. We are now at review of minutes and then zoning officers report. We put out the minutes of April twentieth. You've had those for a week, but I know it's been a busy week. We did not have a chance to do the May eleventh. One of the downsides of the Freedom of Information Act request that we're handling is it absorbs time and keeps us from doing the rest of our business. That's unfortunate, but it's a fact of life. Is there, are there any comments, questions, corrections on the minutes of April twentieth?
Blake is waving his hand.
Blake, yep, Blake. You got on mute, please. Okay, Blake.
Larry had to make me unmute, but I assume I'm back in the meeting now. That's all.
Yes, you are. And, and actually, you're now unrecused, as is Beth and Lynn didn't have to recuse herself, but she's participating now as well. Okay, your comment on this, or, or did you just want to be back in the meeting?
And that, that I just wanted to, yeah, let me.
Okay, no comments on the minutes, okay. Yeah. No, okay. Nip or Dana? Okay, Larry, Lynn. Lynn, any? Doesn't look like it. She's... Okay, I only had a few there minor and we don't even have to go through and find them a couple of places. I did not catch that we elevated Larry to the lofty position of a commissioner. He's actually an alternate, but we'll fix those things as we go before we submit them as finals, if, if in fact it passes. So, and that's the only thing I found. So is there a motion? Well, let's do our normal business. Is there any disagreement with approval of the minutes? I see Nip's hand. Did you have your hand? No, okay. Okay, nothing I see. Okay, without objection, then we'll call April twentieth minutes approved. The zoning officers report, then we distributed. I don't think we need to see it unless you would like to, because it's easier now. I can see everybody, which I prefer. Any comments on the zoning officers' report? Seeing none, we'll call it approved without objection. Okay, now we're to other business. The first one I had on the agenda was the two hundred foot line thing. I was struck by the two applications tonight used a totally different methods to do it and, and they all work, or they both worked. To give you a recap of where we've been since April, if you recall, you had charged me with working with Bill on improving the instructions to make them clearer so applicants know what's expected of them instead of, as was alluded to, coming to the meeting and finding us frustration, our frustration, because it wasn't what we expected and, and deserved to get. So we've revised the sheet. I sent it out last week and it was on the OneDrive. Nip did a great job developing instructions on how to use the town's GIS for those people who don't use a their own method like Mr. Bizik did and Mr. Lockwood. This gives an easy way to follow through the, the GIS system that the town provides. And I, I went through the instructions and it actually worked. That's why I say it was a really good job. So thank you, Nip, for that. The draft has been on the OneDrive. It's now a two-page instruction sheet. That's unfortunate, but, you know, and we have one other thing we're going to have to add. Nip last meeting had suggested we have a, even a, a rough site plan, so we know where structure, structures are on a, a site as part of, to ensure that we get that for every application. So we need to add that instruction in. So that's keying it up. Are there comments on where we are right now? I do think at a future meeting to be determined, we ought to look at that language that says, and all comparable information required by the commission. Because that's very loose. It gives us a lot of latitude, but it requires or encourages us to to say what it is we actually want. Stack language applicants will also provide the commission with all the required comparative information regarding lots within two hundred feet of the lot on which the development is proposed. We don't actually say what that comparative information is, and I think before we lock that in, so Bill tells people what it is, we ought to be comfortable that that's not something we're missing that we ought to have. So, but again, I, it's, it's something if we're going to make a change in our, how we do things, we ought to have it on the agenda listed and then take some time to to discuss what kinds of things we think we ought to have. So that's my tee up effort. Any comments on that, or we'll just proceed trying to make it better? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. The next one is the FEMA issue. That text amendment, we've been, I was hoping we would be farther down the road on short-term rental, but we aren't, and, you know, it's a complicated issue. We just need to decide roughly on the calendar when we want to start the text amendment process. That's easier said than done. We have to notify a couple of different agencies and give them about sixty days to comment on the amendment. Then we have to have a public hearing, which can be brief if it's a non-controversial issue. This will be Sue's first time doing the background administration of this, so it'll take my time to show her what needs to be done and, and she'll be doing it and it'll be good practice for the big one coming at us, but for now we need to figure out, do we want to start this in August and be done in December? Do we want to race ahead and do it earlier or? So what, what are your thoughts on that? It's just a scheduling question right now. Beth?
I would just say whatever was convenient for you, because I know you have your hands full with the other issues. So, I mean, if waiting till August is benefits you, then I'm in favor of that.
Okay.
Otherwise, I would say just do it sooner than later.
Okay, did I hear somebody else commenting? Okay, any objection to that? And, and I'll, I'll just look at Beth, Sue and my workload and try and figure out where it fits. Okay, so we'll do that. All right, thank you. Next one is the Esker workshop with the town. If you recall, when we left that in February, the, I guess it was Keith Nielsen that met with Bill and discussed pathway forward to try and satisfy their needs and the, the public's needs along Noble Avenue and fit in our schedule. And we talked tentatively about having a workshop with the town people, their consultant, the residents along Noble Avenue and, and see if we can find a pathway to more or less satisfy everybody on what the town would like to do without having impacts to the residents. And so this is another scheduling thing, because this, this would set up having a workshop among the interested parties prior to the town through its consultant submitting an application to do work. I think last year they submitted their application in September and then it took to February to get it resolved. We'll want to talk about the issues that were, were prominent in people's minds back in December, January, like whether we have our own expert and what goes into an application as likely doable and likely not doable. Not to prejudge the outcome, but to, to look at real needs versus things that might be nice to have, but might cause problems that are not worth the effort. That took five months, although you, a number of you have pointed out that now that we have that experience, maybe we can expedite it and make it happen a little bit sooner than a five-month effort. So to start the clock, we would want to schedule that workshop, have the interested parties meet and then decide pathway forward. So comments on ideas on that? Blake? You're muted. There you are.
Just a question, really. This workshop, are you, are you envisioning a, a public hearing type of format, or is this just something specific with the applicant and the residents that are local there and then?
Well, we would notice it as a special meeting of the commission. It would be a workshop to sit down with the interested parties on both sides and, and get a better sense of what the town is proposing in a non-regulatory environment. It literally is to, to have some cross-pollination of ideas before we engage in something that would end up in a public hearing. So it's to get people to talk, but if the commission is doing it, then we would announce it as a special meeting as a workshop. I have not talked to John about, I presume that we would be a party to it. Knowing though that we would end up, they would be applying for us to approve a special permit and a site plan approval, like the application was last time, I would have to ask him you know, what kind of role we have in that when we know we're going to be the decision makers down the road. He might say, yeah, the residents and the town need to get together and talk, but the commission shouldn't. I'm hoping he'll say, yeah, commissioners, all or some can, can be involved in that discussion. But until you asked that question, I didn't think to ask. Okay. Blake?
Yeah, no, that's good. I, I'm not convinced we have to. If it would expedite things and there is a need to expedite things, which I'm not sure there is, but maybe there are other approaches to it without us being formally involved. A special meeting of the commission.
Let me see if I understand what you're saying.
What's the right answer is, I'm just trying to figure out what our options are.
Yeah, yeah. See, you're saying if we could be helpful as a part of it, great, and if we're allowed to, great, but if not, we don't necessarily need to.
I don't know how it was done last time, several years ago anyway, when there was a meeting between Frank Boland and Keith Nielsen and the residents, how, how that was, how that was done, that was a part.
I don't know either. I will, I'll talk to John and Bill about that, our involvement. Others? Nip?
Pursuant to Blake's comment, I think there's a provision in our architectural design review where we allow applicants to come in with a, their thoughts before they have a final proposal and bounce them off us to get our reaction. And if, I think it would be in everybody's interest to avoid what happened the last time. And so I would think with, you know, the commission members are kind of well-schooled on this issue at this point. And I think it would be helpful in terms of moving it forward if with the applicant neighbors and us expressing our thoughts, not decisions, but, you know, give some input so that an application doesn't show up three months later and the commission rejects it. You know, four to one, as we did.
You got, you got broken up pretty good there. I think reading before and after, you were saying we should be involved if we can be so that we can contribute. Yeah, good.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Beth or Dana? Yeah, I should have made the record clear. Once Beth and Blake came back quote to the table, Larry as an alternate, stepped back into alternate, so when I'm asking for comments on this subject, it's Nip and Dana and Beth and Blake and myself. All right, so what's your pleasure on when we ought to try and have that workshop? Nip?
Nip Tanner. I, my assumption is that if the town is going to do something, they need approval from us by a certain deadline. And I would suggest we ask them and Daco to, you know, back up from that date. When do they need to have enough information to put a application together that has a chance of, of meeting their implementation target? And then, you know, it, it may, you know, it, our schedule may be busy, but I, I think we'd all like to see this issue get resolved more successfully this time around than the last. And if meant a special meeting for a workshop, I'd be happy to participate. If this, sometime this summer, if that's what's needed. And it doesn't sound like it would tie you up too much, Rick.
No, if you guys are volunteering to be the commission representatives on it, I would participate to listen, but probably not read and think about things as diligently as you guys were, because I'll be tied up elsewhere. The, when they talked, when Keith talked to Bill back in the winter, late winter, they floated a midsummer type of a schedule, the answer to the question you had, Nip. So I think they spent some time backing up from where they want to be at the end to where they need to be to start. So my guess is if you're looking at something like July for a, you know, a special meeting, I don't know if it could even be a I guess I wouldn't want to make it part of a regular meeting, because you never know if the regular meeting is going to take more time than you expect it to. And you don't want to give short shrift to it if you've announced to people that this is going to be the thing to talk about. So probably it would be a special meeting. And I, I would suggest if we want to get on with it expeditiously, I will ask them if mid-July is, well, late July, early August, I mean, late July, early August, I mean, that gives us time to review the record if that's when we get the lion's share of the comments in on short term rentals. Let me, let me ask them if late July, early August fits them, fits their need. Everybody okay with that? Okay. All right. I'm sensitive to, you know, I've had comments of it is summer, you know, so I I don't want to pile meetings on us. It's, I am sensitive to that. Okay. That is Escher. Okay, the next last item on old business is consideration of process for obtaining public input on short term rental proposals and associated criteria. Then you lead time, et cetera. Let me tee that up because as you know, there there's been a lot of activity the last two days and beneficial because I looked at all sorts of venues for a hundred plus crowd and there aren't a lot of choices. All the schools are still not allowing public people in and without belaboring it a lot. We ended up with Baptist Church willing to let us use the the upstairs, the church part of the church, which can clearly take a hundred people. And things like that, but that solves a couple of problems. We had to jump through a little bit of a hoop if we went outside the district, but the church means we don't have to outside the district because of the bylaws. The bylaw that says you have to have your meetings in the district unless, you know, the district resources insufficient. We don't have to deal with that. It's been strongly encouraged that we do this in one night rather than two because there are all sorts of complexities that happen with successive nights of meetings and people not getting to hear. But if we have the church and it's big enough for the crowd and we're going because we have one hearing record, public meeting record to look at. So just this afternoon, a lot of things fell into place very favorably. So I guess the first thing is to ask if there's anyone who disagrees with using, taking that opportunity to use the church that's been extended to us. Beth? You're muted, Beth.
I don't disagree. I just want to comment, you're shuffling papers around or something. And it makes it super hard to hear what you're saying.
I will, I will try not to do that. I'm trying to keep my notes in front.
Yeah, no worries. I just wanted you to know that I don't think we heard quite everything, but I heard the church is available and I'm all for it.
Okay, thanks. Okay. So any disagreement with the church? Seeing, okay, I told Jen tentatively. I'm doing it again, I know, but I have to see those notes that we would be looking at anywhere from late the week of the 21st, like the 24th, but more likely the 28th, 29th, 30th, or July 1st. So everybody okay with settling on a date, let's say in that last week? And the reason I say that is we we've had a couple of people suggest to us, A, they would like enough time to have the proposal and develop their comments. B, some people are coming from a long distance and they would like sufficient time to make travel arrangements. We're not bound by that. Just, I think it'd be a nice thing to do that. If you want to have it more quickly than that, we could bump it back to the week before, which would start on the 21st, go through the 24th. Could not bump it back any further than that without violating the desire to give the public enough advance warning because then that's only about two or three weeks away. So how do you feel about rough dates? Because I'll be talking to Jen tomorrow about that. I need to tell her, you know, how the commission feels. Beth and then Nip and then Dana. Can you unmute everybody? Larry, it's a small enough crowd.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm going to have sporadic availability the week of the 21st. Okay. Because that's my daughter's graduation week, so if we could do it the following week, I would.
I question your commitment to the zoning commission. That's so the week of the June 28th is better for you.
Yes, please.
Right. Anybody else? Nip, you had your hand up? Wait a minute, Nip, you're muted. There you go. Everybody's unmuted now. Good.
I have a problem with 29th, 30th and 1st for a three hour meeting. Any of those evenings.
So those three are, would you say 28th, 29th and 30th are all bad for a three hour meeting? Is that what you said?
29, 29, 30 and 1st.
And 1st. Okay, so the 28th would be good for you. Okay. Okay, Blake, Dana? Comments, Dana?
Dana will be it. 28th is fine for me. I can't do July 1st.
Okay. Blake?
28th would be fine with me.
Okay, Larry and Lynn?
Yeah.
Whoop, I'm sorry, Blake?
You said you'd like to do this in one day, but you know, past history has any, it tells us anything, it's going to take more than one night. Unless you quickly cut it off.
John's strong advice was do it in one night because if you don't do that, you have to deal with who you let in the first night, who you let in the second night. Did the first night's people know what the second night's people said? And and it raises all sorts of legal problems that you avoid if you just have everybody in the same room and they all hear what everybody else said, repeating what he said to me when I talked about the idea of of a successive night.
Well, that makes sense, but that's not the way we've done in the past. It's been a continuation.
Yeah. Yeah.
Rick?
Yes.
I point out that when we've had the continuation, it's been a hearing. And I think the rules for hearing are a little more restrictive and demanding than this. This is just an information meeting. I I hope we don't treat it like it's a hearing.
Okay. Yeah, I I hear you, Blake. I I just, I also wanted to get John's.
You're wrong. I'm more than happy to keep it one night. I'm just saying.
Well, I had said, I forget to who, I I've talked to people at about 10 different venues. And somebody I said, you know, seven to 10, but we might spill over to 10:30. And, you know, it'll be a long night, no matter what we do, but the advantages are a way that disadvantages is the way it was described to me. Who did I not ask? Beth, Nip, Blake, Dana, I'm okay with it. Larry and Lynn, do you want to weigh in on this? Lynn?
I would just say I would, I would like to have it in June so that that the June 28th would be just fine. And if it's important for legal reasons to have it on one night, then even though none of us really want to stay up really late, I think that's just, I think everyone needs to get their chance to speak and and we just have to do it. Once, at once.
Right, okay. Larry, disagreement?
No, I find with the 28th, I I think it could go theoretically as long as five hours. But is there a limit with the church on how late they will allow us to stay?
I have no idea. But if those five hours, please, somebody shoot me and put me out of my misery.
Just saying three minutes times 100.
Yeah. Find out. Well, I don't expect 100 people are going to want to talk. I expect 100 people are going to want to listen. Remember what we had in June of 2019? You know, you're probably going to get 20, 30, 40, 50 type of people and a lot of other people that are very interested in the subject, but it necessarily have something they want to offer or they're better at submitting emails or, you know. So, yeah, if it's 100 people, you're right, it's a long night. How long will the chief church allow us in there? Okay, I will ask that question of Jen.
Rick, will you, you know, is this more in workshop style? So let's say that someone says something, you know, in their three minutes, but that there's some, there's some misinformation in that, some factual errors or or there's just something that they're asking and you know the answer. Do you go ahead and in workshop fashion answer that? Or do we just keep going through, you know?
My hope is that we're going to minimize our responding to what's said. And and the reason is you could blow this up into a 10 hour meeting easily. Remember, as we we've talked about this, this whole how to do this, the last three meetings. And one of the things that came out loud and clear was people can say anything they want in three minutes. You can't stop them. But we can tell them you will be most effective if you point out something in the plan and tell us where you think it's a problem and what you, how you would do it differently to make it either more effective for us or more palatable to them. We've continued to make that point and
I think that's getting out there, yeah.
Yeah, more, the more that we try and answer something that we don't think is quite right, we're going to tie it in enough because we're going to have time afterwards, at meetings afterwards, decide if there's something we want to pick up and and run with. And if somebody says something that's inaccurate, we just quickly say that was wrong and you move on. But if you do it in the course of that night, you're going to take hours. Because then it prompts them to say, well, no, I don't agree with your response. Here's what I think. And now you're into a debate in a room full of 100 people. That never works well. You know, it's unfortunate we can't sit down with eight people around a table, but there's no such thing as eight representative people. There's 100 people within interest. So that's my view. Let's see, anybody else on? So that was where and when. One of the questions that came up after the last meeting was this notion of the representative speaking on behalf of five people. And someone emailed and said, can that be anyone who represents five people? They get 15 minutes, but the five, the other four people don't get to also speak. And the way I wrote that thing that we saw at the last meeting and then I sent revision out was exactly intended to let them do that because I don't think we ought to give special weight to an attorney. But if five knowing residents say John Doe is a really good speaker and we're going to feed him all the things we want him to say, but we're going to let him make a cogent argument of 15 minutes. And the four of us are not going to be able to speak because he's speaking for us. That's how I designed it, but I thought since the question was raised, I would make sure everybody was okay with that. Lynn?
Well, of cour- of course, the way that can backfire, just to maybe devil's advocate for it, is that, say, I want to speak for 20 minutes or 21 minutes. So I'm going to, I'm going to now find seven people that I will represent.
No, it's limited to five people. That's
It's limited to five.
Yeah.
Okay, but any number of people could have 15 minute slots because they just, you know, found neighbors or somebody to do that. Could that blow up on you?
Yeah, that's actually a very interesting.
Now, that, that's a good point. Eric, Larry Dunn. Is the requirement that they are there? I mean, they have to be there versus Lynn's correct, just go out and have somebody sign up and all of a sudden you got 15 minutes.
Yeah.
I think they would have to be present.
And they have no intention of speaking.
Yeah.
That's a good question, and I don't know how you get around that. So let's do some skull searching here for a moment. Because requiring them to be there, you know, fine, they show up and they sit there quietly. But all of a sudden, you've given a whole lot of people 15 minutes opportunity and and now you're in the morning. Has a good catch, Lynn. Now what do we do about it? Yep.
Nip Tanner, Rick, you said that the the reason you extended the 15 minute rule to everybody didn't want to just give it to attorneys. But I think there is an argument that attorneys are in a separate class where they have been retained or being paid by a group of the five residents to represent their interest. You know, hopefully they wouldn't abuse that. But I think it's a different case than than me, you know, Joe residence, speaking on behalf of myself and for my neighbors. So I, you know, and, you know, I'm used to seeing the attorneys granted a little extra time. So I don't have a problem with that.
All right. Any disagreement with that? We simply make it attorneys only for that obvious reason that Lynn raises. Disagreement? Dana?
Could simply limit the attorneys to three minutes like everybody else.
Well, we could, yeah, and we talked about that before and and that's ripe for part of the debate. The value you get out of an attorney, as Nip points out, they're paid to represent people. So we may get actually better more useful comments to us because they're dispassionate about it. They're just paid to do what's right for their clients as opposed to, you know, being worried about things and therefore maybe not being as clear and concise and effective as they could be. That was the logic for extending the attorneys, the the extra time for people who won't otherwise speak. But I'm open to suggestion. I'm just floating trial balloons and whatever the commission decides is fine. We could do that. We could say attorneys don't get any more minutes than anybody else. So what's your pleasure? Yep.
In in that case, you know, if we follow Dana's suggestion and the attorney has been retained by five different residents, does he get three minutes for each of the five? So he does get a total of 15, but it's all broken up?
No, I I don't think so, but the if if the way I read Dana was the attorney gets three minutes, even that becomes a reach because the attorney probably doesn't live in knowing our own property here. So then, well, how come you give him three minutes is going to be the question. But if the attorney got three minutes, then each, the clients could also get their three minutes. The attorney would just be speaking as a speaker. But again, it raises the question of why are you letting the attorney do it?
Nip Tanner, I suggest you run this by John. I'm sure he's used to what the ground rules are for attorneys speaking, these kinds of things.
The only thing he said, I I asked him about this a month ago and he said, it's very usual to let attorneys who represent clients have more time than you might give to individual speakers. It's just, it's whether it's right or wrong, that's how they do this, this business. I can ask him again, though, because then we added extra sideboards. You know, you get 15 minutes, but the other four can't speak and, you know. Okay, so ask John how to deal with attorney, attorney input. Everybody okay with that? And it's process, not policy, so I can email you out and tell you what he says. Lynn?
Yeah, one thing to think of too, particularly when we're thinking about doing this on one night and there being a lot of participation. and there being a lot of participation, maybe, uh, having that be like a ten minute max, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know how many attorneys there will be wanting to talk, so maybe that doesn't make a big difference.
Yeah.
I don't know.
There are only one that I know of, but, uh, there could be more. Um, okay, well, I'll ask John, and maybe we can cut back on some of that time, and-
Blake is trying to speak.
Blake, yep.
Blake Paul, so Rick, just one other question, or at least a point that should be clarified in your instructions about this three minutes. So, you, you referred to residents or property owners, but if a property is owned by more than one individual, how many three minute slots do they get?
Uh-huh.
An attorney, similarly with an attorney, they could be representing four or five property owners, but, you know, there could be two individuals at each property, and so, what, what's the total roll up to, really?
Uh-huh.
More concerned even to run out of time, cuz people are gonna-
No, no, yeah. I, I think, you know, maybe wherever we're thinking this, cuz it's not a legal, formal session, right? It's, it's information gathered, so I think, I, I would assume you certainly asked John, but I would think we have latitude to set whatever ground rules we want. I think Blake makes a very good point that says, you know, it's per property, not per listed owner. I could be three owners on a piece of property, right? So I think that need, I do agree that needs to be clear, and since we're talking about, you know, property rights, if you will, then it's on a per property basis.
Okay. Uh, everybody agree with that? Okay, Beth? Beth?
You.
Oh, you were saying, yes, you agree? You don't-
I wasn't, I was muted and I could not speak.
Oh, okay.
Um, my feeling is, after listening to all of this, I think it should just be three minutes across the board for any property owner or an attorney. If an attorney can't get out there, point in three minutes, uh, I think if you're, you're worth your salt, you can do it.
So speaking of attorney-
Looking like an attorney. You know, that simplifies a lot of things. It's, it simplifies, you know, identify your four people that you're speaking for, and then you gotta make sure they don't speak, and yada, yada, yada. Maybe the simplest is the best, everybody gets three minutes, including an attorney who represents clients, and he or she can submit a five page brief if they want to provide further background.
Yeah, I think-
Everybody agree with that? Simple?
Then is it individual, not property, three minutes per individual, not three minutes per property?
Well, I don't know how you do that, frankly, cuz we're not gonna know who the owners are. I, I know a couple of properties that are multi-owners, just because they've all common, and they have the same name, but-
No, but Rick-
You don't know, yeah.
When you do the signup sheet, you put down your name, and you put down the address. So you got a list of the addresses, and if there's more than one address-
Well, but what if the owners don't all live in the same place?
I, I-
Well, they're, if they're property owners and not residents, then they would have to list the property address that they're-
Yes.
-they're the owner of, yeah, okay. Name of address of property owned, or residence address. All right, and the intention here is that one person per property speaks for that property.
For No-Inc property.
Is that right?
Yes.
Everybody agree with that? One person speaks per property. Right. And our logic is simple, there's gonna be a lot of people who wanna speak, and, um, we want everybody to have a fair opportunity.
And do you wanna say one owner per, per prop, one, one, one person per property, and no one person more than once too? So if I own three houses, or some people that do, then I don't get nine minutes, I just get three minutes. I could have somebody, you know, co-owner, go give a different address and do that another three minutes, but I don't, I'm not gonna get up there.
Well, I mean, if anybody lives in No-Inc, they're gonna, even if they don't own property, if they reside in No-Inc, they can still speak.
Yes.
They're gonna have to, I, I suppose what we're gonna have to do is have somebody take a photocopy of their driver's license when they submit it, because otherwise, I could say, I'm John Doe, I live on Elm Street, and how are you gonna know they aren't?
Oh, now, this gets really complicated too, because what if you've got people, they're individual, like rental units? Or I've got a, you know, an apartment in my house, and I wanna talk, and that renter wants to talk too.
The resident is easy, because if you have identification that you're a resident, uh, you could have ten residents living in the same building. They all have a right to speak. The question is, what about the property owned is a little bit of a, a different problem because of the multiple people owning it, and I don't even know if it legally, of course, we don't have to worry about legal with this one. We will, for the hearing. That's another question for John, can we limit to one speaker per property owned? Okay. Okay, Beth?
I, I would just make a suggestion for whatever it's worth, I think that's gonna be really hard to police. I, I just think everybody gets to speak once, whoever wants to speak, they can speak once for the three minutes, lawyers included, three minutes. I don't want, you know, if a husband wants to say something, and a wife wants to say something, fine. But I think it's just gonna be super hard to police, I don't really wanna take photo identification to get, to let somebody speak. Uh, you know, who's, who's gonna be doing that before?
Okay, everybody agree with that?
No.
No, okay, Nip?
I, I think the, the previous suggestion of one speaker per property is fair. It's appropriate, doesn't run the risk of lengthening the meeting. And when people identify themselves to speak, they have to give the address, and that's just normal in all of our public meetings. Any, any speaker has to give their name and their address. In this case, the property that they're, you know, gives them a right to speak. And I think we just say ahead of time, one per property, and we don't, you know, yes, we don't have the police standing by in case somebody tries to sneak an extra one in, but I think that's a reasonable rule.
Nick, what about multifamily properties?
That's, it's, it's, it's possible, I think it's unlikely in a multifamily situ-, property situation, that more than one person is going to speak. What we really need to hear from is the person who owns it, not necessarily somebody who rents there.
Yeah.
I, no, I think, I, I think it should be open to everyone who lives here. They count, the renters count too.
Legally, a, we'll have a hard time excluding someone who's a resident of No-Inc.
Yeah.
It'll be easier to say, well, you know, property owned by multiple people, one person speak on behalf of that property. I can, I can see making that argument more easily than I can say, you got people living next door to each other in a multi-unit building, and, and they can't speak, even though they've lived here for ten years. I think that would be a problem, I can ask John that one too, but boy, I'd see a problem with that. J C D, define owner and resident. Okay, we are over analyzing this a little bit, but I think it's worthwhile to do it. And property owner. Okay, so, my recast of this is, we wanna try and make it one person speaks per property. We also wanna try and allow people who have an interest to speak on their own behalf for three minutes. And as Beth said, even if it's a husband and wife, and they both live in the same house, you know, the intent would be to try and let people, let people speak, but we have to be conscious of, you know, people double, triple, quadrupling up to, uh, to try and, um, get views out. Uh, John, we need to ask, can we limit it to one speaker per property owned? And how do we define owner and property owner versus limits on how they speak? Does that sound about right?
Yeah. Um, I, I really think we're overthinking this. I'm getting frightened about what all is gonna happen. Um, I don't see how you limit one per property owner. I, I just don't see how you're going to enforce those rules, and furthermore, I don't think that you'd necessarily wanna even have those rules if the public thinks that they, if the public thinks that some right is being taken away from them. I think if this is an informational center, informational workshop, if you wanna get as much input, uh, as much unaggressive input as you, as you want, let's just do it one per person.
Mm-hmm. So that should be our goal, and we should think about if there are ways that people are gonna abuse the privilege, we should try and anticipate them, and see if there's a way to limit that, minimize it. Uh, is that kind of the sense of-
Yeah, I mean, I just-
Dana and Nip were-
I don't see limiting it to one per property, I don't see the utilitarian value of it. I, I got, so can I ask you a question? We, we were originally going to have people send us emails, um, is, has that been rethought?
Yeah, we're still gonna do that, so we have a speakers list.
Okay, okay, okay.
And, and then we're gonna try and, I'm not sure how yet, but, um, balance it, so the commit- See, all of this is for our benefit, not for the public's benefit. We want them to tell us what they would do differently, you know, to make their life better, or to make us more effective. So we have some latitude to design how we get that input, and we should talk about that. Do we wanna take all, uh, comments from all the short-term rental operators first, and then everybody else? Or do we wanna, how do we wanna do that? That's a question we need to answer, I don't know, we need to do it right now. I wanna, we need to do it tonight, cuz I need to write these instructions. So, cuz next week is kind of the deadline to get the instructions out to the public, if we wanna give them three or four weeks' notice before the meeting. So. So, um, Nip, Dana, and Beth have said, one three-minute speech per person, and don't add extra frills, and you had a concern with that, or were you persuaded by them?
Are you, are you talking to me?
I was asking Nip if he was persuaded by the point you and, and you, Dana, and Beth had made about keeping it simple, and just tell everybody you can speak for three minutes. Because you had decidedly, you had a decidedly different view, and I wanna make sure-
Hey, hey, Nick Tanner, thank you for asking, no, I'm not persuaded. I, I think it's appropriate to set reasonable rules and to publicize them, but as I said, we don't need to have the police there to enforce that the rules are being followed. But I think it's appropriate to set a reasonable expectation for people going in.
Why don't we say it that way, our expectation is that one person will speak per property, and any speaker will have three minutes to speak, including attorneys or other representatives of other people. Does that sound good? Okay, all right, that was a thumbs up, so, um, our expectation is one person speaks per property, and each person speaks three minutes.
You know, I think of past meetings, I'm thinking back to it, and often husbands and wives have spoken. So, I think this, um, I think this, I think this does really restrict people, so I, I, I really think it's important for the one, that it has to be residents or property owners of No-Inc, or their representatives. And, you know, and each person gets one shot at it, as long as they meet those criteria, and they takes care of the people that are in multifamilies, and you don't have to make all these exceptions, as long as it's just, you know, one, or, or leave people out.
Okay, that's why I didn't, I didn't voice it as a hard and fast rule, I voiced it as our expectation, hoping that would guide most people in that direction. But as Nip points out, we're not gonna have a cop at the door. So, if two people speak from the same property, husband and wife, I'm not gonna go down there and make one of them sit down. Okay, I, I mean, I'm just trying to do the logic flow here, that, uh, we can guide them towards something, but push comes to shove, if somebody wants to talk for three minutes, and time permits, we're-
Are you requiring everyone to sign up ahead of time, or are you asking for a list ahead of time? A lot of other people jump in if they wanna-
The way it's written now is, uh, you sign up to speak, and everybody who signs up to speak gets to speak first, before anybody else. And when the speakers list is done, if time permits, you can raise your hand, and we'll recognize you from the audience. That's how it's written now.
Okay.
And, and Larry Dunn, and Rick, that's appropriate, that's how town meetings are done,
Yeah.
and that allows you to manage the time at the end.
Yep.
And with the amount of notice you're providing, there shouldn't be any excuse not to, to sign up.
Okay. All right. Uh, all right, so I'll redraft it that way and get it out in a few days, and you can see what it looks like. But again, the deadline will be sometime midweek. Uh, well, if we're gonna be the twenty-eighth, the first is Monday, that's four weeks, yeah, so we have into the middle of the week, I think. What, what, again, we're gonna have is the meeting announcement, that statement of expectation that we sent out in, in May, uh, because more people hopefully are on Nancy's list now, so more people will be getting that. The rules of engagement, how we're, we're gonna amend them from tonight, and a copy of the document itself. That's what I intended to be, the four things in the package that goes out. Yep?
Uh, Nick Tanner, uh, Rick, from our discussion at the last meeting, my impression is that it's equally useful for people to submit something in writing-
Yeah.
-to us. And I would suggest that we mention that, that, you know, showing up at the meeting is not the only option they have. They can submit something in writing, and perhaps even encourage them to submit something in writing, which could be longer than they could say in three minutes, and in their presentation say, "I, I've sent you a doc, I, I sent you an email two weeks ago, and these are the highlights of what I said in that, A, B, C."
Yep.
And so then we get a written record without having to do a transcription of this session.
Yeah.
Uh, but let them know that that's an option.
Yes, yeah, and you had said at the last meeting, including, and in particular, people who speak for their three minutes also should know that sending in their written comments is appropriate and, and welcome.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Uh, okay, any, um, anything else on this subject? Again, you'll see a redraft in a day or two of those rules of engagement. Any objection to how I described the package that will go out by email, that'll go to Nancy Gilmore's list, which is about four hundred people now. Uh, the agenda, the explanatory statement, the rules, and the document, and the rules will include what I've just described. You know, everybody submit in writing, feel free to. Objections? Seeing none? Okay. That concludes the process for obtaining public comment, unless you have other things to offer or add. Dana? Dana? Uh, unmute, please.
There we go. Were you going to discuss order? Order of speaker during the-
Oh, yeah, we just talked about that, and I, I forgot about it, yeah. Um, what's your pleasure? I mean, I'm open to suggestion, you know, we can take- What's your pleasure? I mean, I'm open to suggestion, you know, we can take people? First come, first served. When they email in to be on the list, the first one comes in as the first one that gets to speak. Or we can, you know, John said some places have even done alphabetical? Last name alphabetical. Not sure I'd want to do that, but? It's, it's kind of open to? Do your pleasure. Larry?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm, I'm the party of the best. You'll keep it simple approach. For, you know, you, you put it in, just the first ones come in, they come in. So it's very easy to manage. And it's, it's random and it's fair.
First come, first served? Any disagreement? Okay, Dana, then you had your hand up. Another point?
I, I agree with.
You agree with that? Okay. Uh, it'll be? Dana? Agreed. Okay, so that's the order of? Appearance in the speakers list. Okay. So be prepared for a flood of emails coming a minute after this thing hits the street. Okay, so that concludes consideration of the process. Dana?
I'm sorry, I just want you one more thing. Suppose somebody doesn't? Sign up on email? And they come that night. Is there an opportunity for them to speak and sign up as well?
What's your pleasure? It'd be nice to have everybody who speaks sign in because then if we're listening to the record, maybe we have a name that? We didn't hear, but we can find in the? The list.
I mean, norm, normal procedure is, is there's a signup sheet? There in the church? And if you hadn't, you know, submitted it prior? You're added to the list pretty after the end of the list.
Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't? Put them to the front of the list though. Met them late. So email signup is first? Speakers? Then? Sign up that night? Later? Okay, everybody agree with that? Okay? Alright, other things on the process? Okay, seeing none and it's eight minutes of? I have a? Well, it's been brought to my attention, welcome? Our new alternates, at least one stuck it out. I mean, you know, you're staying power Mary Ellen is great. I'm impressed. We have, and I, I want to make this as a little bit of a? An introductory statement, but I want to hear how everybody else feels too. Just to let you know how we have? Dealt with this issue. It's unusual? That alternates would be? As active as our two have been this last two years? Our longstanding practice has been doing this for the record too, for people who listen to the? The meeting record. Our longstanding practice has been to allow alternates to? Uh, participate in the debate, but not vote unless they're seated for an absent alternate. Um, and that's been very useful. Lynn and Larry have been? Very, very? Effective and useful contributors to the debate? And? My? I don't want to state my preference now without, how, without having other people comment on this. Let me just leave it as that's how we've done it now? Up until now? But ultimately alternates? Serve and participate at the will of the commission? Either the chairman? Bring them into a debate or the commission voting or? Expressing its majority view? If it's different from the chairman's? But ultimately alternates do serve at the, the? Pleasure of the chair and or commission. So going forward, you know, things could change. They don't have to. With that, I would leave it up for other commissioners to? Decide or discuss how they see? Moving forward into the future because we're really at the end of? Of the lion's share of the development mode? And leading into public comment, then maybe some redevelopment and then? The formal public process? I won't say we're at the end of the process yet because we aren't, but? We're getting close to it. So? That's the introduction to the? The topic and? I'd welcome input from anyone? Commissioners? Yep?
Nip Tanner, uh, Rick, in my years of involvement? I started as an alternate? And then? It was a vacancy. I was appointed as commissioner. Subsequently, I was elected? And I'm now? Finished four years of my elected term. For most of that time? The alternates did not participate in the discussion. If they wish to, they sat in the audience. If we needed them to fill in for a commissioner? Who was absent or accused themselves and the? The chair? Appointed them? To that role? And once that role was done, then they reverted to their? Previous observer status? As we got into the? Short term rental regulation discussion? The decision was made to invite? Lynn and Larry? To? Participate actively? In that process? Full voice in all? Discussions? But they didn't get to vote? So? There's a clear difference between what we've done? Historically? And what we've done the last couple of years as we've developed the? The? Regulations? And? For what it's worth, my personal preference? Would be to revert to the? The traditional practice, which I think is a little simpler and cleaner.
Others? Dana and then Blake?
I have a question. Over the last year, year and a half? Larry and Lynn have been valuable? To the discussion, but I? Have? To your recollection, have they been involved in? The vote and how much have they been involved in the voting process? I'm trying to figure out what Nip is? Is arguing?
They have not been, they have not voted on anything related to short term rental unless they were seated for an absent member.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. So on the basis, so let me offer my opinion on the basis? That Larry and Lynn have been absolutely invaluable? And considering the fact that this has been a very, very hard issue to deal with? And considering the fact that? We have needed them for perspective? I, I think that we ought to? Encourage the other three alternates to be involved? In this issue? And I, I would only note that, that? I would imagine that some alternates may have run? Perhaps? With, with a hope that they could be involved? And make a difference and, and helping us to? To decide.
Okay. Blake, you're next.
Sure. You know, both Nip and Dana bring up good points, but? You know, I think it was important to have? The input from the alternates early on as we were having all the discussions and trying to get all the different points of view, but? We're getting to the point now where we're really starting, need, need to start making decisions by voting on things? And in the interest of expediting this whole process, I think? More worthwhile to not have? More and more discussion and? Just limit it to the commissioners taking votes on, on the process. I, I think we really do owe it to the community? To resolve this sooner than later? And I just wouldn't want to keep opening up a can of worms and revisiting things that have already been? Ashed out.
Okay, others? Beth and me? Beth, have you?
I agree with Blake.
Okay. My turn? I do and I don't? Typical chairman, you know, sits in the middle of the fence and leans one way and leans the other. Sorry. Harking back to what I said in the introduction that they serve? Alternates serve? Or contribute? Discuss? At our pleasure? I kind of like the idea of? Making sure? The people who have been elected into the process? Have the opportunity to contribute? Well, I am bouncing right back and forth. I, I do agree with Blake and Nip? That we got to get on with this too, and, and that is also true. I don't want to forestall? Productive contributions. It would hard, be hard for me to believe that new alternates could contribute? Productively since I haven't been privy to the two years worth of debate? Which is a, a good point for? The point that Blake had made? I'm inclined to want to, my view, I guess is? Let's see how it goes? As long as all alternates know that if? If it gets unproductive to do it the way we're doing it because we made the tent, the people under the tent? Became more numerous? And it's tying us down into more debate than? The five elected commissioners think is productive, then? We have a right to say, okay, we thank everyone for their contributions, but now we're going into the five commissioner? Discussion and, and decision making? My preference, I guess in a sentence then is? Proceed the way we have been, but everybody be prepared for us to change our mind if we think it's not productive. I don't know how people feel about that. If this were a motion, by the way, the motion would go? Three to two? To limit it to the five commissioners from now on? We haven't had such a thing yet and, and I would urge we not right now while we're mulling things over, but? I saw three people saying? Let's make it the five and go forward and I heard two people say, yeah, we could extract some more benefit out of? A few more voices in the debate? Just from? You know? Parliamentary point of view, that's how the votes look to me as people spoke. Uh, Nip, you had your hand up?
Yeah. I was going to make the motion you don't want to hear, so?
Don't let me stop you if that's what you want to do, but I would, you know how I'd vote. So? Because of what I said? We can always have that vote at the next meeting. We have a meeting in June. You know, we can have that meeting, that vote anytime? And it doesn't really even have to be a vote. It's our? Self-imposed invitation, which we can withdraw at any time? So maybe just? Try and see how it goes? Yep?
Okay, you're advocating your point of view. I think? Trying it and seeing how it goes? There's, there's multiple possible outcome to that? And one of them is we get partway into it and some of us run out of patience? And we say, uh, you know, this is a waste of time. I don't want to do this anymore. I think it's much better? That we make a decision upfront? On how we expect to proceed? And we stick with it? Until we get to the end? Of the regulations? And? You know, this is somewhat cynical point of view? There may be a bolt of lightning? That appears on June 28th? And is a huge? Wake up? But personally, I would be very surprised? If there's any point of view, suggestion, whatever? That surfaces on June 28th? That hasn't been discussed? Presented? More than once? In all the dialogue that we've had? Plus all the? The input that we've received plus? All the input that we're going to receive before the 28th? On the meeting, at the meeting on the 28th? And? I think at that point? It behooves the five who were elected? To be the decision makers? To put their? Hats on? And start making those decisions?
That's kind of consistent with what John's advice was on use of alternates way back a year ago. Now that you? Put it that way. I hadn't thought about that in this discussion. He had said at, at the point? You're ready to make decisions, then alternates should? Become alternates and the commissioners should be commissioners? Which is kind of consistent with what you're saying?
Rick?
Who? Dana?
Ovia, I mean? That's why I was asking Nip earlier? For the history of whether or not we have allowed? Alternates to make decisions and the answer was no, we have never allowed them to make decisions. That's not the point, that the, the value of them has been? More ideas, more representation? More points of view? We don't? And I? There's no reason why they can't, can't be? Participatory? And there's no reason why we can't move forward with our voting just because? The alternates are allowed to participate? In discussion?
Okay. There are two pathways here. We can have a motion? Or we can? Not have a motion and it implies that? We do more or less what we've been doing? And then either? The run up to June 28th or the aftermath of June 28th, we can keep doing the same or we can make the decision then? One value of what Nip is saying is? We clear the air early? And it's not? It doesn't look like a? Another thing we have to vote on after July 28th because we'll probably have enough things to talk about? Not this? But then you don't get what Dana is? I mean, let's face it, we're not making any changes in the next month. Anyway, we already voted. That's the document that's? Going to be on the table for the public meeting? So this next month is not an opportunity to debate merit? So? Alright, I'm? I'm on that fence being chairmanly here. I'm, I'm looking for? Four people to decide what they would like to do? Blake? Whoop, you're muted. Hold on. You? There you go. Go ahead.
I mean, it's only fair that you let the alternate know what, you know, the intent is? Prepare for the next meeting and participate? But? I'm certainly ready to move to the next phase of this and I hope the next phase is to? Way everyone's to, um, input that we've had and what we're going to get the next, um, workshop and start making some decisions and votes? Do that.
I think everybody agrees with that. Whether it's five or? You know, seven after the 28th, I guess is the question.
Well, only five are going to be, we can vote no matter what.
Say again?
Five are going to be voting no matter what.
Right, right.
Well?
Yep?
And if it was? Alternates involved? After July 1st, I assume it's either five or 10?
Yeah, in, in a discussion mode, it could be as many as 10 people instead of seven? Engaging in the discussion? So everybody's clear on that?
I'm sorry, I need to interrupt here for a minute because you haven't been calling on me, but I was raising my hand to try to? Prevent you from the faux pas you're making? And that you have not introduced one of the other alternates who is here. Nancy Narai is also here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you were off for a while. Now you're on. Welcome. Uh, we welcomed Mary Ellen before and I, I did not see that you joined? Or did not see your name. Sorry. Okay? So? Back to the debatable point? When I see a pregnant pause and it's 9:05, I say, yeah, let's leave this to be discussed, a good thought about? In between meetings and discussed again? In a month? If not sooner, if we have to have a special meeting and I'm hoping we won't have to. If not sooner, if we have to have a special meeting and I'm hoping we won't have to. If there's no one who's going to offer a pathway other than we'll stay as we are for now, then somebody would want to offer a motion to adjourn. Nip?
Yeah, Rick, I know it serves your goal to.
I'm trying to track everybody's view.
No, but you said we'll stay the way we are. So your, 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 you know, three people expressed an opinion that we not stay the way we are. You have a preference that we stay the way we are. And so your decision at this point is we'll stay the way we are. I think all we can do at this point is say we are postponing the decision and we will make a decision before July 1st. So we have clear direction going forward at that point. I make a motion that we postpone this decision until our next meeting. But at the next meeting, we make a decision.
Okay.
Leave it up in the air as it is at the moment.
I was angling for a motion. Thank you. Postpone decision until next meeting. Then decide. Is there a second to that?
I can.
Second, best deal. Okay, discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none of, roll call that. Dana? Say that again, please?
Hi.
Yes, okay. Nip Tanner? Yes, Blake? I, Beth?
Hi.
Okay. Chairman doesn't need to vote, but I like unanimity if we can do it. So I'll say yes to that too. We have a five to nothing vote, a rarity on this topic. Okay, that is everything I had on the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Beth Steele, motion to adjourn at 9:12. Second Blake, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Nice meeting. And again, welcome to Alternates.